And its pulse is gridded with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together. One business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers. It's where the global marketplace meets hometown values. Where Americana isn't just a tradition, it's a way of life. Here, your experience makes the difference. With access to railroads, major waterways, and eight different highways, this is a place in motion, sending goods, services, and ideas not just across the state, but across the world. And when the work ends, the day's just beginning. With beaches like West Beach in the Indiana Dunes National Park, exciting hiking and biking trails like the Diana of the Dunes Dare or the BMX Track, and local treasures and exciting festivals, you'll know you're in more than just a bedroom community. From veterans of foreign wars to hometown heroes, our diversity is our strength, and we forge our future with the same flame as our steel. Oh, there's a place in the Midwest that's calling you home. The best part of Portage is what's next. The best part of Portage is you. There's more for you in Indiana. There's a place in the Midwest, fifty miles southeast of Chicago, nestled near the coast of Lake Michigan. It's a place driven by what's coming next. A place where industry is the lifeblood of its community, and its pulse is gridded with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together. One business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers. It's where the global marketplace meets hometown values. Where Americana isn't just a tradition, it's a way of life. Here, your experience makes the difference. With access to railroads, major waterways, and eight different highways, this is a place in motion, sending goods, services, and ideas not just across the state, but across the world. And when the work ends, the day's just beginning. With beaches like West Beach in the Indiana Dunes National Park, exciting hiking and biking trails like the Diana of the Dunes Dare or the BMX Track, and local treasures and exciting festivals, you'll know you're in more than just a bedroom community. From veterans of foreign wars to hometown heroes, our diversity is our strength, and we forge our future with the same flame as our steel. Oh, there's a place in the Midwest that's calling you home. The best part of Portage is what's next. The best part of Portage is you. There's more for you in Indiana. There's a place in the Midwest, fifty miles southeast of Chicago, nestled near the coast of Lake Michigan. It's a place driven by what's coming next. A place where industry is the lifeblood of its community, and its pulse is gridded with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together. One business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers. It's where the global marketplace meets hometown values. Where Americana isn't just a tradition, it's a way of life. Here, your experience makes the difference. With access to railroads, major waterways, and eight different highways, this is a place in motion, sending goods, services, and ideas not just across the state, but across the world. And when the work ends, the day's just beginning. With beaches like West Beach in the Indiana Dunes National Park, exciting hiking and biking trails like the Diana of the Dunes Dare or the BMX Track, and local treasures and exciting festivals, you'll know you're in more than just a bedroom community. From veterans of foreign wars to hometown heroes, our diversity is our strength, and we forge our future with the same flame as our steel. Oh, there's a place in the Midwest that's calling you home. The best part of Portage is what's next. The best part of Portage is you. There's more for you in Indiana. There's a place in the Midwest, fifty miles southeast of Chicago, nestled near the coast of Lake Michigan. It's a place driven by what's coming next. A place where industry is the lifeblood of its community, and its pulse is gridded with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together. One business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers.
I'm sorry, you're holding up the council meeting, Mr. Cherry? I know, but it's funnier to tell blame it on Tom. Leanne, I can't tell you how much I thought it was gonna be Liz coming out the door. It's great to see you. I just was like, oh, here's Leanne. Absolutely. There's Liz. It's okay. At first, I was about to announce you, and it turned out to be Leanne, which is totally cool. Absolutely. All right. Let me... Oh, I have to pound the gavel. That's a rule. Welcome to the December City Council meeting. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we do the... Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Parnell, could you lead us in the prayer?
Sure. Heavenly Father, thank you. Thank you for this evening. Thank you for the opportunity we have to gather here, Lord, to take care of the city's business. We pray, Father, now for the wisdom of your Holy Spirit, that decisions that we make, Father, would be for the betterment of the citizens of the city of Portage. And then also, Lord, we ask for your continued blessing upon our country, our leaders. We pray, Father, for the safety of all of our soldiers, especially during this time, Lord, during the holiday season, when many of them cannot be home with the people that they love. So we pray, Father, that they'll feel your peace and presence. Thank you for the opportunity we have to gather here tonight. We thank you for the gift of eternal life through your Son, Jesus Christ our Lord. This we ask in his name. Amen.
Now, if we could do the roll call?
Absolutely. Mayor Banta?
Here.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Here.
Councilmember Weidenbach?
Here.
Councilmember Hurst?
Here.
Councilmember Parnell?
Here.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Here.
Councilmember Ambler?
Here.
Councilmember Zilly?
Here.
Does everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from November 12? And if there's no corrections, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Communications, correspondence, announcements from the mayor. We've had a lot going on, but I think what I'll do is I'll save that for, you know, future announcements for the sake of time. I have a note that with the proposed NIPSCO electric rate increase, there was information that was brought to the council at the last meeting. In your Dropbox, you should see some information that was sent to you by NIPSCO. In the interest of this meeting, I'd rather we wait till the end to discuss that, but I just wanted to note that that's there if you guys didn't get a chance to see it. Yeah, we reached out to NIPSCO. We talked to their people, and, you know, there's info within it, but we'll get to that towards the end. Liz, Clerk Treasurers, report?
Okay, the State Board of Accounts finished up their audit. The findings should be published within the next two weeks, and we really can't talk about it because it's confidential until they're published. We worked very hard on that audit, and I want to thank the members of the council that attended the exit conference, and also the mayor for working diligently with me, with my current... My staff. My staff worked very hard with the State Board of Accounts. It was a grueling two months, going through the budget process, plus salary ordinance, plus a State Board of Accounts audit at all the same time. But we made it through it, and looking forward to having a successful and fruitful 2025.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is actually jump to the... I'm gonna change the agenda around a bit in order. And I'd like to jump to the... What's currently under the introduction of ordinances? B, Ordinance 24-39, amending of the 2024 salary ordinance. Per discussions we've had between the last meeting and now, and then through the Ways and Means Committee meeting, I think that it would be proper to start there, as we map out how we want to proceed or how you guys want to proceed. Sorry, I gotta be careful about "we." I gotta respect the executive versus legislative. But Liz, did you want to comment on this ordinance? Or... Actually, we need a reading first, right?
Yes.
Councilman Alvarez, would you mind giving us a reading on that one? Ordinance 2439, amending 23-15, an ordinance establishing the amount of salaries and compensation to be paid to all appointed employees and officers of the City of Portage, Porter County, Indiana for the year 2024, be it and hereby is ordained by the Common Council of the City of Portage, Indiana, as follows. That from the first pay date in January 2024 through the last pay date in December 2024, the pay schedule for the employees and officers of the City of Portage, Porter County, Indiana be fixed as follows. Let's see. And is this just the particular? Effective 12/16/2024, Deputy Clerk Treasurer... Clerk Treasurer... Utility Clerk at a salary of $62,000 even, a bi-weekly salary of $2,384.62, which also is a weekly salary of $1,192.31, an hourly rate of $29.81, and an overtime rate of $44.71, when multiplied by one and a half times. Be it... Excuse me. Yeah. Let the record show that the ordinance has been read in its entirety. Thank you. Liz, did you want to comment at all on this? Or... Oh, I'm sorry, we need a...
Motion to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? That passed?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying...
Wait, hang on. Can we have Liz explain this?
I apologize. Go ahead. I'm getting better at this, but man, it's like a... It's like playing speed chess sometimes.
Okay, this is a position that's already in the... Been in the budget. It was not funded for this year. The salary was $45,000. It was for a receptionist, a counterperson. And I'm asking for the position to be changed to utility clerk, and also for the pay increase. I have found an employee that's got exceptional background, education, knowledge for this position. She comes with high recommendations. She... From a number of sources, I checked out all of her resume and all of her references. And I feel that she would be a total asset to the City of Portage. This position's paid 100% by utilities. By hiring this person with her expertise in finance and audits, she does currently work for the State Board of Accounts. She will be leaving them and coming to the City of Portage with open arms. She did current... Did work on our previous audit that we just completed. So she's very familiar with the city finances and all aspects of the Clerk Treasurer's office. So she would need very minimal training, if at all. She's very familiar with every computer program that we currently are... That we currently have in the city, that we are using in the Clerk Treasurer's office. And she would be a complete asset. Again, like I said, she's 100% paid by utilities. If this position isn't paid through utilities, we cannot use the... If we don't fill this position, utilities will not pay for any other position in the Clerk Treasurer's office. It's a Clerk Treasurer's position paid 100% through the utilities. She has a bachelor's degree in accounting and working on her master's. She has... She's a paralegal... Has a paralegal certificate. Again, I can't say enough about this candidate. She would be a total asset to the Clerk Treasurer's office and the whole City of Portage.
Liz, I have a question. If we cannot use that salary, that money, for anything but utilities, can we use it for something else in utilities besides the salary?
Well, actually, she would be saving... Yes, you can. They can, because it'll go back into their general fund. But the Clerk Treasurer's office, we just had a recommendation from the consultants, is at least one employee, if not two, understaffed. And with the State Board of Accounts recommendation, they said that we should at least hire one additional employee. And we are, like I said, understaffed. In order to bring us up to par with some of the recommendations that the State Board of Accounts has given us, we will need additional staff.
Liz, I believe that, to use the point, money, of course, technically, if you don't use it, it would stay there, but my understanding is that this position saves a great deal of more money for utilities by not having to pay the consultants to do the work that they're currently doing. Is that correct?
Exactly. It's 50%. We'd save at least 50% the first year, and probably a lot more the second year. And the utilities, who's in the audience right now, the superintendent over utilities, totally is welcoming this position or this person with open arms, knowing that she's gonna be saving additional money than what the salary pays.
Speaking just as somebody who serves as also the chair of the Storm Board and the Sanitary Board, the amount that we've been paying for consultants is very high. And so having this position in house saves that money that we can then put to work in the utilities, which is why Tracy is nodding her head, Dan's nodding his head, or smiling, or whatever Dan does. But all said and done, this is a cost-saving measure. Sometimes, and actually quite frequently, as a city, we spend more money on consultants than we do having an in-house person dedicated to it, so...
So to be clear, from what I'm understanding, this amendment is strictly for the ability to hire this position today or within this 2024 calendar year. And in order for that to occur, we have to amend the 2024 ordinance, which really is only bringing on this person to this position for the next three to four weeks in the 2024 calendar year that's going to be ending at the end of December 31st, rather than just waiting until 2025 and addressing that position for the new year. Is that correct?
No, because that position would carry over into 2025.
That's if the position is created now in 2024.
Yes.
Basically, you would like this person to start in...
2024.
Two weeks. And in order to do that, it needs to be in the salary ordinance for State Board of Accounts purposes.
Yes.
The job has to... And I don't mean this in a silly way. It sounds like the job has to exist for Liz to be able to hire it, and the salary ordinance creates it. Yeah.
To be clear, though, the clerk, the mayor, have the authority to hire anybody within their budget, but the salary ordinance does have to reflect their salary for accounting purposes from the State Board of Accounts. They will audit it and say, this person was paid X amount. The salary ordinance doesn't have a requisite position that they were paid for. But the mayor and the clerk have the authority to hire people through the Board of Works as the employment board, as long as it's within budget. And then if you run out of money, you have to ask the council for more money.
So with this position, if it was created, would this position be eligible for any raises in 2025?
No, it would not.
And then just one question to be clear. Because this position is funded solely through utilities, we would not have to come back next year and seek additional funding to maintain the position, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And this was included in the 2025 budget, correct?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Is there a reason we have to do it now? Why can't we wait till January?
Because in January, we will be starting our AFR, and I would like to get her on board before the AFR starts, which we will be starting around the 15th. We'll start preparing for it, and she's got the expertise to help us tremendously and be able to cut down on some of our consultants starting on the first of the year when we start the AFR.
Why do we have the 2024, when it used to be titled receptionist and now it's utility? It was targeted at $45,000 for the 2024 annual salary, but now it's been increased to these $60-some-odd thousand dollars?
Because she's actually... That's... She's actually taken a cut in pay to come to work for the City of Portage, and that's what we... Me and her sat down and agreed upon, what we could... What I could actually pay her that was also in... Also budgeted for the 2025 budget.
But just to be clear, the receptionist position that existed in the salary ordinance wasn't funded in the budget. It's not the same position?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
You could say you're taking one out, putting one in. Would that be the more correct way to say it?
Yes.
Like, there isn't going to be a receptionist?
No, no receptionist position.
Which doesn't exist now. Nobody is filling that role now, right?
Correct. I have four people in my office doing that job.
Any other questions? All... We had a motion and a second, correct? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
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 I believe it passed.
Can you do a roll call, Mayor, just so we have it clear for record?
I can ask for a roll call.
Councilman Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilman Weidenbach?
No.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Parnell?
No.
Councilmember Vasquez?
No.
Councilmember Ambler?
Yes.
Councilmember Zilly?
Yes.
Pass four to three.
There we go. So I'm gonna take a little bit of a break real quick and ask our chief police to come up. I think we have someone that we want to acknowledge, and just seeing how the meeting's going, it might be good to maybe get that part done.
I'm excited for that. I'm sure they are.
I am too. We'll take a light... Not break, but a lighter moment.
Well, I appreciate you letting us jump in here. I'll call him up afterward, because I know I've been up in the... That spot where you're standing here awkwardly while people are talking about you, and it's a little uncomfortable, so... I did want to honor one of our reserve officers, a longtime reserve officer for the City of Portage, Gil Spiezak. So Gil received his acceptance letter to what is now known as the Portage Reserve Division on December 10th, 1997, and was sworn in and started the Porter County Reserve Academy in January of 1998. So I'm hoping these numbers are pretty close. They're probably a little under what he actually put in, but this is... This is what I had available to me. But you'll see how big this number is, and that's why I'm prefacing it that way. But over the next 23-plus years, Gil volunteered over 14,000 hours, which is an average of 609 hours a year to the City of Portage. So to really understand the significance of this, you gotta realize that this is someone who puts on this uniform, makes that mental, physical sacrifice to be a law enforcement officer for free. There's a bunch of our other reserves here, and, you know, and we'll kind of honor them as a unit here in a minute. But again, that's over 14,000 hours, over 23-plus years, of somebody coming out and doing police work for free, because they want to be involved in the community. They want to help out. And that's pretty selfless. So during this time, you know, Gil made himself available for numerous emergency callouts. So, you know, if we have a major incident and we're running around and we're really in a staffing crisis, the reserves will come out and they'll pitch in. They'll do whatever we need, whether it's traffic, whether it's transporting, whether it's watching a crime scene, you name it, they're doing that. He also came out for countless hours of patrolling the city, basically just patrolling the city along the Uniform Patrol Division. So what that means is going to calls with all the rest of us, and again, not being paid. And then hundreds and hundreds of prisoner transports to the county jail over that time. And the significance of that is every time we make an arrest, that pulls one of our patrol officers off the road for at least an hour, probably. By the time they drive him out to Valpo, do the intake, drive him back. So as you can imagine, on a busy night, or busy day, whatever, busy shift, to lose an officer for upwards of an hour for each time there's an arrest made, having somebody that's willing to go out there and do that for us is a huge, huge benefit. Another thing that Gil was very involved in, he played a major role in traffic planning for the majority of the city's large events for nearly 20 years. As long as I can remember, Gil was involved in the fireworks... Or I'm sorry, the Fourth of July parades. You name it, if we had a city event, we were usually asking the reserves to... The reserves to come out, help us with traffic, and get a plan together. And it kind of got streamlined to the point where they were coming in with their own plans. Fourth of July, we tell them, you know, this is what time it is. This is the parade route. And then they come back to us and let us know what they've got planned, which is awesome. It's one less thing that we've got to worry about, and then they're out there and they take care of it. So like I said, for as long as I've been around, I can remember that being one of the big things that he was in charge of. So unfortunately, sometime around 2022, Gil sustained an injury. He was forced to cut back a lot... On a lot of his activity. He's still been around. He's still been helping out. But some of his abilities, what he could... What he could do prior to that have been cut back due to an unfortunate injury. So ultimately, within the last couple of months, this led to his retirement from our Reserve Division after nearly 26 years of service. Again, you know, officers come and go, and we love to honor our retirees and really thank them for what they did. But again, this is... This is another special one for me because of the fact that, again, we're not paying him. We're not paying any of these guys. And to serve that many years and do that many things for the city, really not expecting anything in return is pretty awesome. Because I'm gonna tell you, if I wasn't getting paid, I probably wouldn't be here tonight. No offense, but... I did start out as a reserve. I will say that. It's a great program. But again, you know, for those that stick with it for the long haul, it's just amazing. So if Gil, you can come up. Congrats, man. Thank you. So Gil, we got a plaque here for you, Reserve Sergeant Gil Spiezak, number 618. And then we do not usually give our badges out after a reserve retires. That's usually an honor that's reserved for a 20-year full police officer that retires. But in this case, it just seemed very fitting for what he's done. So I'm gonna give you your badge back, and that is yours to keep, sir, so...
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I want to thank everybody. This is a hard night for me. This is something that's very passionate to me for everybody that knows me. I've been in the city since 1966 as a boy, and I've seen the city grow. And I get to know so many of the people throughout the city. I tell people, you know, all these officers here, you have to love helping people to be a police officer. Disregard all the negativity you see on TV. It's something that really is good. I've had a lot of people ask me how I could do this stuff, dealing with people as I'm taking them out to the jail, trying to kick out the windows and everything else, and trying to get them down there safely. I said, "For everybody that I'm dealing with there, there's somebody or several people thankful for what we just done, because we've taken that problem out of their life." There are so many people. I've even had jailers even comment how I've had one prisoner, you know, kicking, screaming, fighting as we bring them in. Next trip, I've got somebody thanking me and hugging me, just for talking to them. So it means a lot to the people. And the great thing is, is I've gotten to know so many people throughout the city over these years, especially all these officers here. There's a great bunch of guys here in the city. Portage, you're blessed with the police department you have and the men that are out there. I can tell you, they are... They are so dedicated, and they are there to help everybody, which is the blessing that we have in the city. So with that, I want to thank everybody for this honor here. And I'll say one thing one last time. Portage 618. I'm 1042. Thank you.
This back row of gentlemen over here, and actually Chuck here, was on our reserves for a long time. Again, all these individuals, you probably see them sometimes here at the meetings. I'm sure you see them at city events. But again, they're all out here volunteering for us. They're really helping us do what we need to do by coming out here and volunteering and serving. So, you know, I'd like to give them a round of applause, too. I know they came up for Gil, but... I appreciate you guys letting us do this year. I think it meant a lot to them, so...
It means a lot to us, and Gil, I've grown up just watching you, doing what you do, I mean, my whole life. So, and I think that we can all... Most of us can say that, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, back to the regular agenda. Ed, I've got... So, back to the regular agenda. Ed, I've gotta ask you about the vote that just took place. I believe under Indiana law, when we have a suspension of the rules, in order for it to pass and take effect, it has to have five votes. It passed with four, well, it got a four vote just now, what we did. If that's something that you could check, or if you concur, I think that we'll need to schedule a special meeting to still have the second vote, unless there's something I'm not catching.
Ed, it's IC 36 for 613.
Yep. Sure thing. And then, do you recommend we proceed, and then you can give us that clarification? Thank you, because I know we'll have to schedule a special meeting if that's the case. So, let me jump, or move to our next spot, which you might say, "Mayor, why you jumping around?" But I did warn you guys about this. I'm gonna be jumping to the, what would be considered unfinished business, the second reading of the 2436-25 tax anticipation warrant. I, initially, when this got proposed at the last city council meeting, it was proposed, and I'm very comfortable saying, proposed as a draft. There were questions we had about budget, there were questions about how much money there was for different things, you know, that we would wanna achieve. My recommendation was for it to go to the Ways and Means Committee. I've attended the Ways and Means Committee today, so I'm aware of, I believe I'm aware of what's gonna be said. I'll have a little bit more to say afterwards, but if I could start with the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Geis-Hurst, if you can go over what you guys talked about, and if you guys have a recommendation. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. 2436, 2020, oh, you're right, salary ordinance, the one above it. 2435, 2025 salary ordinance, as if we didn't know that was gonna be the second thing on the agenda.
Meeting with the Ways and Means, we discussed different options, quite a few, actually, but we agreed to table this.
The whole thing? I gotcha. That's the recommendation from Ways and Means. Is there other comment or discussion on there?
Well, I'd like to go ahead. There are some amendments I'd like to make, so I'm gonna make a motion to amend. Bear with me.
No problem, sir.
I would like to amend the ordinance to reflect a 2.5% increase over 2024 salaries for all non-union employees. Except the new position we just created, the Deputy Clerk Treasurer, Utility Clerk, that position, brand new. So that's 2.5% for all non-union employees. For the fire administration, the union contract for this year has a 3.8% raise. I'd like to amend, currently they're in there for a 0% raise, I'd like to amend that to 3.8%. And then, the unions that are currently bargaining, so that would be police, streets, utilities, and parks, would remain at 0% until their contracts are negotiated. So that is my motion to amend the ordinance.
We have a motion, and I suppose I should ask if there's a second, but I.
And to be clear, some of those were 2%, some were 0%, some were 8, 9, 10, 11%. I'm motioning to amend all of them to 2.5%. And non, and it also excludes elected officials.
I would also like to place a motion on the floor, Mayor, to go with what the Ways and Means Committee is trying to recommend to table the ordinance, meaning that there would be no raises at this time until after all contract negotiations are conducted.
Having heard Colin's motion first, I'm gonna ask, is there a second?
So my motion is to give over 2024 a 2.5% raise to all non-union employees, the fire administration to go from 0% to 3.8%, which matches the fire contract for 2025. It excludes the newly created Deputy Clerk Treasurer Utilities position, as that position's brand new, and it also excludes elected officials and unions that are currently in negotiations. So that would be police, streets, utilities, and parks, because they're in active negotiations. So they'll remain, once they negotiate their contracts, we'll reassess the salary ordinance to match whatever contract is ratified.
So, question for Clerk Treasurer Modesto or Councilman Zilly. Can the city afford that proposed increase, or is that, what would the logistics behind that be?
Do you know what Liz?
This was discussed at the Ways and Means meeting, and yes, there is money in the budget for that proposal. We can move, we have budgeted extra money into the benefits, so the extra money that's in the benefits that we anticipate to save in the benefit line items can be moved into the salaries.
Initially, and I know we're waiting to hear seconds, but initially, when this was proposed, I intended it to be proposed as a draft, make sure it goes through Ways and Means, in part to make sure that we had time to study, you know, what we can do. What Colin described is something that we can pay for, both with savings and with what's within the budget, depending on the department, when you put that together.
Well, and, I mean, to be quite frank, some positions were significantly higher than
Oh, yes, indeed.
2%, some were zero, and that would be going up 2.5%. Others were 2%, so it's going from 2% to 2.5%. But, I mean, there were some that were 8, some that were 9, 10, 11, I think one might have been as high as 12%.
Initially, there was a desire to propose where we wanted to get to within a time, and see how that could get hashed. In time, though, it really became clear that we didn't have enough time to put that all together. And so, I think what we're looking at here is, I don't think that anybody would recommend voting for what was already proposed, where things are incomplete. I think that, quite frankly, everybody would and probably should vote no for different reasons, based on what was proposed at the last month's meeting, which, again, I know it's got my name on it, but for me, that began as a draft. When it comes to what we can afford, what Colin's proposing, we can afford, like, it's within the money that we have, and again, it lowers some, and it opens the ability for us to look at other raises we wanna do beyond the cost of living next year.
That's my intention here. It gets everybody that is not currently negotiating a contract, a cost of living adjustment effective January 1st of 2.5%, which is equal to what Social Security is giving out of 2.5%. And then, the mayor, the clerk treasurer, department heads are well within their rights to come back in January and propose additional raises for positions beyond what we're already looking at tonight, and we can take those up on a case-by-case basis, but, I mean, some, like.
I think simply put, that was the hope that we could do. It just was not realistic, and I've gotta admit, when I have a goal that's not realistic, what I attempted to achieve between November and now, I'm taking it as a lesson that it was a lot to try to hash out each of those individually. And so I think what we're fixing now is addressing the fact that at the very least, we should be aiming for a 2.5% increase cost of living, or at least I believe that's what Councilman Zilly is stating.
That is what I am proposing.
I believe the Ways and Means Committee was also considering, by tabling this, that there would be a wage study initiated, so they can then revisit this salary ordinance and make any cost adjustments and wage adjustments in one visit, one transaction, once they were able to study what the wage study results would bring.
I think the thing you wanna consider is that a wage study is gonna tell you what a position should be paid, or at least how it compares to other positions of the same responsibility, cities and organizations of that size, but we also gotta consider that any position that's not already making over, you know, where it would be, there would need to be a cost of living increase, as it is. We anticipate a cost of living increase being necessary, so the question is.
Right, I think, in my view, these are two separate issues. You're looking at what people are currently making today, and saying what most companies, most businesses do. We are going to offer a 2.5% cost of living adjustment to increase your pay January 1st to account for inflation, which is what Social Security sets it at. Past, it's been as high as 8% and as low as 1.5%. This year, it's 2.5%. And then, based on the wage study, the mayor's proposals, I know Liz had proposals for her office, we can come back in January, February, and address specific positions that department heads and the mayor and the clerk treasurer feel should get bigger raises than 2.5%. I just think it is unfair to make people wait for contracts to be done, so you have non-union employees who don't get the benefits of bargaining a contract, by the way. They have to wait until the unions negotiate their contracts, which, by the way, could be December, it could be January, it could be June, it could be end of next year. We have absolutely no idea how long that's gonna take. And then, on top of that, we have to wait for a wage study for people that may not even get a raise to begin with. So we're holding up a cost of living adjustment for everybody that's doing the work right now, and holding it for all of these other factors to take place. I just think that's unfair.
And I think it should be noted that a wage study might show that some positions are already getting paid either more or exactly what they should be, which is its own thing to reckon with if that happens.
But that's not to say they shouldn't get a cost of living adjustment.
Not claiming that. Oh, absolutely, and that's what I was just about to say. The other factor is that performance-based or responsibility-change-based wage increases is separate from a cost of living. So I do completely understand the concept of, we're going into Christmas, it'd be nice for people to know that their pay next year is going to account for the cost of living increase.
There's also that option that was also presented in the Ways and Means Committee, that all non-union employees, instead of having it 3.8 to fire and 2.5 to the rest, that it would be 2.5 to all non-union employees across the board, across the board for non-union, including the fire department as well.
I think the challenge there is the fact that, I don't remember that being said, that's okay, but all said and done, I think the issue there is that you're talking about a department, in the case of fire, where, for the record, love our chief, assistant chiefs, but if any of them decide, hey, you know, I wanna go back to just being on the force, they then go back to being union, and they got the raise. So I believe some of the, not just tradition, is making sure that the pay increase matches that flexibility of going from one to the other.
And I will say, police and fire administration are unique department heads in that they retain the benefits that the union members get, they retain their membership in the union. So for a chief, for example, Chris, isn't chief in four years. He goes back into the union.
Don't worry, we're gonna.
But in these four years, he retains that membership. And if you're not giving those departments the requisite raises that the members, the union members are getting, you are inevitably going to have the issue to where, what is it, your battalion chief is making as much as the highest-paid union employee.
Which actually then creates a situation, if you've got a good firefighter or a good police officer that you wanna promote, or if the chief wants to promote, you gotta make sure that they're not weighing, well, wait, why would I wanna get promoted if it doesn't reflect where I am in this department, you know? Uniqueness is clear.
Correct. That, that, that is why I'm saying for the fire administration, right now they're proposed at 0%, which, we know what the union members are getting this year, it's 3.8%. Their contract isn't in negotiations.
That's the reason why it's proposed for fire, not police.
Right. Come 2026, when we're doing this, if fire's still in negotiations, they're gonna be in the same position that police administration are in currently, 0% until the contracts are finalized, and then we'll address that. But in the past, there were, I mean, the city's been doing it this way for probably, I don't know, eight years, to where administration is getting at police and fire exactly what the unions had been negotiating. There were times where administrators were getting significantly more than what the unions were negotiating, and then that created a complete opposite problem, where you had the chief making significantly more than union rank-and-file. And the way to write that was to start making sure that they were receiving the exact same raise that union rank-and-file were receiving, because of the uniqueness that they retain their union membership. They are still, I think, Mike, am I correct on this? You all still pay dues to the 150, but you don't get 150 protection at the moment as administrators. You get FOP protection, you don't get 150 protection, but they still pay their dues to stay members of the 150, because at any time, they could go back and be rank-and-file members.
Mr. Comenda, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you said something, and I don't wanna misquote ya, and I want you to be very careful, because I know that you're like me. Sometimes, we're not as politically correct as some of our more trained people, like the lady to your left. There is something to be said, too, about the fact that, as you noted, that not every non-union person has the benefit of a police chief, fire chief, or someone in the police admin, or the fire admin. If something happens to you, or if something happens to Tracy, you're just gone, whereas they have the ability to fall in back to the union, which is where reflecting that, I believe, is important.
Correct.
I just wanted to quote you accurately. I don't really think that was my original, you know, point going in, you know?
Yeah, and that's true. I mean, I could be gone, i- if the mayor didn't like something I did, or said, or whatever the case may be. He could say, "Well, Dan, I appreciate your service, we no longer need it." I don't have that protection. Tracy don't have that protection. Randy Reed doesn't have that protection. None of us have that protection.
It's the difference between police and fire that is being accounted for here.
Also, their pension continues to be based off the set pension of whatever it is for fire, senior master firefighter, and senior master patrolman, which would receive raises. So, their pension contributions are also based off that, whereas, like, Dan and Tracy, every other department head, every other city employee is in the standard state perf. They don't have a special negotiated pension like police and fire do.
So is it still the position of the Ways and Means Committee to table this?
You'd have to have a Ways and Means Committee meeting to do that, but I think you can ask the members.
I mean, I still have a motion to amend the ordinance out there, and if somebody wants to second it, you are welcome to do so.
And I still have the motion, too, based on their recommendation to table it.
Right.
So I have an additional question regarding the wage study. Do we know how long that would be, that would take to be completed, and would that be conducted by our HR department?
It would be conducted through HR, and if we were to, we could immediately jump based on the AIM study, but if we wanted to go more professional, thorough than AIM, that'd be something she'd bring to Board of Works, and we would pick the company to do that, given the fact that the wage study would not pertain to the bargaining unit employees, it would just be for the non-bargaining. It's a lot shorter than doing it for 387 people. We're looking at probably three months to, I mean, anything could go wrong.
I'm sorry, if I could interject.
Go ahead.
With real-time assistance, HR Director Gray indicates it could take up close to a year.
Oh, a year?
Well, I think, we're talking about two different things here. The, there needs to be an overhaul of job descriptions in the city, a complete overhaul of what is everyone's job description, where do they fit in in terms of a clerk, an administrative assistant, whatever other titles exist. That is gonna take a lot longer. I think, looking at what people are being paid, and determining whether or not that is above average, below average, right where it should be, that is a quicker process. That data exists, we can compare ourselves to other cities of same size, that, all that data is publicly available, by the way, through Indiana Gateway, through AIM.
That is correct.
There are two parts of this process, but to hold up the cost of living adjustment for everybody else, while we wait to do that, while we do that process, it's not gonna result in us ending up cutting people's pay. We're not gonna cut anybody's pay down.
Well, I think that the recommendation to table was because they were looking at having the other department contracts completed. Is that correct, Madam Chair?
I mean, contracts have been in negotiation for the entire year. I mean, the contract expired back in January, right?
No, no.
Or, well, I mean, you knew, rather, you knew they were expiring on January 1st, right?
And we began in the fall, and so we're aiming on getting it done as close to January as we can. There's been some pressure on both ends to be done sooner than historically how long it's taken, but it has taken historically a long time.
But let's look at the history. I mean, we could be talking about June, July, August, and they're gonna get back to it, to be clear. They are always retroactive to January 1st. I, I think the problem here is, we are in house telling everybody else that doesn't get to bargain a contract, you have to wait until the unions are done, and I think the message that sends to city employees is a terrible message. You have to wait for everybody else to negotiate, figure out what crumbs are left, and then you get the crumbs. I just don't think that's right.
And I think especially in context of the cost of living increase piece of it, because I think that that's the key spot. It's one thing to say that we're waiting to do a wage study, to compare what people are getting paid based on performance, based on how they compare with other spots. It's another thing to look at the cost of living going up, and the fact that we know that our budget, the money that we have, allows for a cost of living increase for 2.5 for the non-union. I think, simply put, a month ago, if you I think simply put, a month ago, if you asked me that question exactly, I was not completely sure. We know that we're sure now.
And, and to be clear, the 2.5 I'm proposing is not a majority of city employees. It is the minority. I don't, between fire or between police, streets, utility park, that's probably, yeah, that's probably 200 employees.
We're saying it's in the money, we have it. It's less than $75,000 that we're talking about.
And if this proposed amendment to the salary ordinance is approved this evening, when would that take effect? Would it be in two weeks or at the beginning? Okay.
Yeah, it would be the first payroll in 2025.
And so if we're tabling this and waiting until what's projected to have the contracts completed before January 1st, that's still the same timeframe to where it would be revisited for a better.
I mean.
That would be great.
That's ideal. That's assuming that negotiations wrap up in 27 days.
Well, and I'm just going based on what mayor has been saying that they're pushing for it.
And we're extremely optimistic at the pace we're going because the pace has been pretty incredible, especially the level of things we've been talking about, you know, in our meetings. But that said, there's being optimistic, and I do think that there's being responsible. It's one thing if we didn't know that we have the money to do something, we know we have the money to do something, we know that we're talking about a 2.5 cost of living, which we can't afford to do. And so I think the simple spot there is, if we decide later, and I say we, I'm sorry, if the council decides later that additional wage increases are necessary for the non-bargaining employees, the fact remains that what they're getting paid now should still reflect a cost of living increase.
Right.
If you don't give someone a cost of living increase, you are effectively cutting their pay.
Correct. Also, I would say, like, the ordinance as presented, I would not support. I'm not going to support giving certain individuals significantly more than 2% and not give some people a raise at all, which is what the current ordinance proposes.
I would just state again that.
I understand.
Oh, no, and I just want to make sure we clarify that, that's my own, too much optimism a month ago that we'd be able to get some of those things studied and hashed out. But I think that now, I've got to admit, certain things were not as realistic to get achieved in a month's time. So now we're trying to backtrack to what is realistic and what is necessary.
Right. And I think my intention here is to get everybody that we can, right now, that's not negotiating a contract, a cost of living adjustment, starting on January 1st. They know what their pay is going to be on January 1st. And then, individual position by individual position can come to us and we can have an up and down vote on each one, because some of us would support some of them, some of us won't support some of them. And if we try to do this as an all or nothing solution, you are never going to get an ordinance passed.
Well, I have to agree with you on that. My thought process as well, since we're still in limbo about whether or not the position of the clerk, utility clerk passed or not, and it may require a special meeting, I'm assuming that special meeting would have to occur before January 1st, which takes us to mid-December.
Well, and not only before January 1st, but I'm sure Liz has a date that we need to have it by to effectively hire the person if it were to pass.
So my point being that if the Ways and Means recommendation was to table this to mid-December, couldn't that be one meeting altogether?
That is fine. I mean, it's fine. I would still, like, if somebody would like to second my motion, I would appreciate that. But if not, then I guess we're tabling it.
Right now, we've, well, actually, right now, we have.
I'll second Councilman Zili's motion for the record.
Well, there we go. We have a motion, and we have a second on Councilman Zili's.
And we still have my motion on the floor to table.
Well, it doesn't have a second.
Right, we have to go through incidental motions in order.
So we've got a motion, we have a second. I am going to ask for discussion. Elsman Alvarez, did you have anything you want to say?
Just, you know, after hearing the information, if we can afford it, and to reflect the cost of living adjustment for the city of Portage employees who are non-union and who work hard every day, my only regret is that it doesn't take effect during the holidays and that it's at the first of the year. So I would support this agreement, or adjustment. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
And once again, we're the, who are the employees that it did not apply to?
Elected officials, and then the, well, I guess we haven't created that position because, we'll see what Ed says after he looks at the law. The deputy clerk treasurer, utility clerk, who's in the 25 salary ordinance, police, streets, utility, park, union employees, police administration pending the resolution of the contract, and then it would be 3.8% for fire administration.
Ed, did you want to say?
Yeah, to respond, it does require two-thirds elected members in order to pass a motion on the same day that it's presented.
Okay.
So five would be needed in this case.
All right. So that does require the special meeting. That said, and again, as an executive, I want to be careful, but who am I kidding? When this was proposed as a draft, I had what I now believe to be unrealistic expectations about how much we could hash out. And I've apologized to, you know, you guys and the members, it's a lot to try to study some of what's proposed. And with that in mind, this really is smart that we took what was previously one thing and broke it into three pieces. You had the motion that we, or the thing that we voted on before, which is the hiring for the clerk treasurer's office. You've got this proposal that's here right now, and then you've got the separate one for raises that are based more on performance, responsibility, what have you. I completely understand waiting on giving raises to people until we know we, you know, have the money and know that we've got a wage study. But I do think that knowing that we have the money for a cost of living increase, I think that that is a separate matter from a performance-based pay, because we know we have it and we're talking about less than $75,000 here to make sure that people's current pay keeps up with the cost of living. And that's all I can say. I mean, it's your guys' call as a council, but as the executive, I can assure you, we have it. And as I spoke at the Ways and Means Committee, I think that this is a totally doable thing to do, to make sure that our people go into Christmas and the new year knowing that their current pay and purchasing power isn't being reduced.
And being that we have not reached the majority, and this is going to require a special meeting, which is likely going to happen in a week or two, if this is tabled the way the Ways and Means Committee recommended, we can come back and address both matters at the same time if we approve for it to be tabled.
Well, right now, we've got a motion.
With the potential of your other contracts being completed.
You are correct. We are gonna, if we want to address the earlier amendment at a special meeting, we can. Now, Ed's going to have to check me on this one, but I think Liz can hire whoever she wants, whenever she wants, as long as she has the budget. The ordinance is going to have to, the 2024 salary ordinance at some point would have to reflect that person's salary, but my understanding of state law is the clerk treasurer has the authority to hire whoever she wants in her office at any time, and if she ran out of money, she'd have to ask for an additional appropriation. But she has the authority to hire a person today if she wanted to.
And the money's in the budget.
Am I correct on that, Ed?
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
Ed, can you explain where the salary ordinance matters? Because I'm sure there's people that might have listened and said, well, wait, why have a salary ordinance if she could do that?
Well, I think you have to establish that the fiscal body approves of the salary, but in terms of the autonomy of both your office and the clerk treasurer's office, you have that right. You would obviously run afoul of the law if you exceeded the budget limits.
Well, and we did, by the way, there is a position in the 2024 salary ordinance for a receptionist, and that person is not going to make $45,000 between December 16th and the end of the year. So from a state board perspective, there's not going to be an issue. I mean, it's good practice that every position's listed in a salary ordinance and there's a requisite pay attached to it, but I don't see any issue. Liz can hire whoever she wants in her office. The mayor can hire whoever they want, as long as there's a budget to pay for them. But what I'm trying to do here is give those people that we can clarity of what their pay is going to be on January 1st.
And I think that, again, it was one thing a month ago where we had to run numbers and see what we had, but I think that upon viewing it that we have it, there is something to be said for, we know that any pay increase for people come whenever it is, is going to exceed that 2.5% because it's going to come into that cost of living increase. At the end of the day, a 2.5% increase is coming, that's why COLA has determined that that's the cost of living increase. So if you have people making money now and the cost of living goes up and their pay doesn't match it, you are cutting people's purchasing power, their spending power.
And to be clear, we could go higher. I'm not saying we have to stop at 2.5%, we could have set 3% or 4%.
2.5 is where we know.
2.5 is what the federal government has set for social security recipients. My company, we're doing 3% because we're feeling a little bit more generous, but like, I think at minimum, a 2.5% is fair for those that aren't bargaining contracts, those that don't get to go in and bargain their contracts and negotiate their benefits and their wages.
Well, and let me be clear, it's not that I'm not agreeing with you on the 2.5, I'm just looking at it that instead of having two steps in the process, since we now know we have to do a special meeting, that we do this at the next meeting because maybe it is going to be 3% if the rest of the contracts are done, with more optimism that they're going to be completed in mid-December.
There's optimism, but there's also responsibility, and that's what I was trying to communicate at the Ways and Means Committee meeting, you know, when I spoke. And it was weird because at one point in the Ways Committee meeting, I've straight-up said, I think the 2.5 is the way to go, and what I was told is, well, that's what we're saying. So now that's, it ended up being something else than what I was told at the moment. But that said and done, there is something to be said for, we can be optimistic, I am optimistic, but there's something to be said for letting our employees that we have know right now that their purchasing power is not going to decrease for sure because we've got it set, and we know we're going to do that anyway, and we have the money to do it now.
Well, and of course, it would be retroactive. If we ended up doing, we've done it in the past where it didn't happen until January or February, and it was retroactive, I understand that.
But to not have to go the month of January, not having the money that you know should be coming, and quite frankly, for the clerk treasurer's office to not have to go back and re-tabulate what you need to send everybody, which we know has been a struggle in the past.
Let me ask, when is this special meeting anticipated then? In a week, two weeks? What are we talking?
We got to figure that out. I think the question is, do we want to solve an issue right now as we have the money to solve it and we have the ability?
So, just to be clear though, we don't need a special meeting. This could wait till January, and we amend the 2024 salary ordinance. Again, the clerk treasurer can hire whoever they want within their budget right now.
I think we're talking about the 25, the 2.5%.
Well, I understand, but we could pass it tonight without a special meeting. This is a second reading. If four people are going to vote for it, it can pass tonight, and this is over, we'll be back in January with our regular meeting, we can address the ordinance that did not pass tonight on suspension. I mean, there are a lot of options here, we don't have to have a special meeting to do this. We can.
I would rather do a special meeting to make sure that that position's approved before I hire someone, because I do not want that position eliminated, I want to make sure that position is approved. Again, I want to make sure that position's approved before I hire someone.
And, by the way, my motion was to amend, so you're not voting to adopt anything. You can vote to amend it, and then we can table it, and we can bring this back, but I'd like to have it on the record of exactly what we're going to be voting on at a special meeting.
So to start, we have a motion and a second to amend, and as noted, voting to amend it is not the same thing as passing it. That could happen next, it might not. But I guess what all began is, all in favor, please sit.
I'm going to request a roll call.
Oh, yeah, request a roll call.
No problem. Let's do a roll call.
Councilman Alvarez.
Yes.
Councilman Member Weinbach.
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yes.
Councilmember Parnell.
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Ambler.
Yes.
Councilmember Zilly.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you. All right, what we got next?
We still have a motion to table it.
I mean, I'm going to make a motion to approve. I mean, we can address a table motion if you want, but I see no reason that this needs to wait till another meeting.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Liz, could you call, roll?
Well, I'm going to, if someone's going to make a motion to table, that's going to take precedent, so.
Oh, okay. We have a motion to table, is there a second?
I second.
So we got a motion to table. Now we'll do the roll call vote. Forgot you're the parliamentarian as well. I appreciate it.
So if that passes, then the motion to adopt.
Oh, a roll call?
Councilmember Alvarez.
What are we voting on right now?
Okay, so, right, so you guys all voted, I think unanimously, to amend it to the 2.5 cost of living increase and the 3.8 for the fire. So now, what's on the floor is to table it so it won't get approved tonight, it'll have to wait till a future meeting. So if you want this to happen tonight, like, if you want to know that it's the case, then you want to vote no on this one. If you want it to get tabled to a future meeting, you want to vote yes on this one. Am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And being with time that it might then also give latitude for contract negotiations to.
They're not going to be over in two weeks.
I'm just going to be as gentle as I can.
They will not be done.
I can just be as gentle as I can. That's too optimistic for that. I want to get things done soon, but to put the kind of pressure on people's wages all the way to January based on that is just too much.
And the finances of the city.
And I'll ask this question of Liz. I mean, how long, I mean, it's not as easy as just entering 2.5% into the payroll software. You have to go through and amend, change everybody's salary to adjust it by two and a half percent, that's going to take time. And in order to get that done, you need time to do that. And if we wait another two weeks, then it's the holidays, people are off. I mean, that is going to put a crunch on the clerk treasurer's office to get this done in time for the first paycheck of 2025.
Absolutely. My office is going to be short-staffed because of vacations that need to be taken and sick days that need to be taken before the end of the year. So you're absolutely correct, Colin.
And again, if we were in a window where we knew negotiations were going to be done by January, I get it. A month ago, I was very optimistic. I'm still optimistic. It's irresponsible. There's a difference between being optimistic and responsible. I believe personally, at this point, it is irresponsible to just count on all that to be wrapped up on January. What we've got to do is account for people's wages right now who are counting on it.
But there's also that ability to retroactively pay them, correct?
Yes, which means that somebody is going to go the month of January with less purchasing power, and so what you're making is not as valuable as what you were making the year before, and you're waiting for your money to come back.
And they'll get the windfall at the end if there is back pay. It's not that they're losing it, they're just not getting it more immediately.
Well, yeah, I mean, yes, they're, well, first off, that would require us to make it retroactive. There's no guarantee that it's going to be retroactive.
Right, we would have to vote for that as well.
But also, again, if we wait two more weeks to pass what we're already, clearly, we all just voted unanimously to amend this.
And we have the money to do it. And if I'm in January and my bill has gone up because the cost of living has gone up, I'm not going to say to myself, no worries, eventually the city council is going to retroactively give me money.
Well, I mean, if we do it in two weeks, it's, the clerk treasurer's office will get it done. I'm just trying to make it easier on them so they have four weeks to get this done as opposed to two weeks right during a holiday to get everybody's pay. When's the first payroll in January?
First payroll, payroll in January is, hold on a minute, Carrie's looking at it. When's the last payroll in 2024? The last?
13th, right? Uh, 13th, right?
It would be, well, we would have to have in all the raises by the end of the week between the 16th and the 20th.
Right, so you'd have to go through and do all of this within four days of us passing it.
Yes.
I want to thank both of you two for pointing out all of those things that were never really considered, too.
Was that one of the two?
And to be, do retroactive paying?
Liz, yeah. I was confused, yeah. Not trying to take any credit, I just, again, the lesson for me here, and to put anybody through stress, I apologize, was thinking that more could get done in an amount of time. I love the idea of having the council more involved through the appropriate standing committee to plan the wages for the upcoming year, but to take something and try to do a one-size-fits-all bill, it just does not work, and to try to ask that of the Ways and Means Committee was too much. And I've apologized to individual members. I think the way we fix it now, though, is address what we can do that's the responsible thing, and then when it comes to performance or work-related increases, that's something that we can bring up in proposals in the month of January.
I appreciate that.
Okay, there's a, there's a table on the, there's a table on the floor with a second.
Yes, there is. We have a motion, a second, so I think, Liz, is a good time to call roll. So this is the vote to, if it passes, it tables it to a future meeting. Okay.
Councilmember Alvarez.
No.
Councilmember Weinbach.
No.
Councilmember Hearst.
No.
Councilmember Parnell.
No.
Councilmember Vasquez.
No.
Councilmember Ambler.
No.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Zilly.
No.
Now there's a motion and a second to adopt. Unless there's any discussion, I think, Liz, you could call roll.
Councilmember Alvarez.
I'm sorry, this is adopting as Constance stated?
Correct.
This is adopting the amended.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Weinbach.
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yes.
Councilmember Parnell.
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Ambler.
Yes.
Councilmember Zilly.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. So let's make sure that we never have to do this again, and I will do my part as mayor to not put this through this again.
Can, can we for the record, make sure we clarify what the motion exactly was?
If you want to go ahead.
It was a 2.5% to all union employees, that includes Department head. Not elected officials, not police administration, fire administration to 3.8% over 2024. Did I miss anything? Oh, and it excludes the deputy clerk treasurer position that's newly created?
The newly created deputy clerk treasurer position.
Correct.
So that's in there for 2,000,000.
Correct. And that did include the removal of the pay for the boards and commissions because it was in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Ed, are we all good? All right. Ed, at the end of the meeting, we still need to bring up if we want to do the special meeting for the position, the deputy clerk position, or?
I don't think we do. I mean, we can address it in January, can we not?
Yeah, I believe so, right?
As long as it's in the salary ordinance for 2025.
Then I think you're good because it's within budget, and it's not going to spend all 45. No, certainly not, so. So it is to say the problem didn't solve itself, but this solved that. Got it. All right. So let's go to unfinished business. We have the second reading of Ordinance 2432 approving the issuance of bonds for the City of Portage Park District. Do we need, I'm so sorry, my brain is like fried. Do we need to have it read again?
Can I do a little explanation about this?
Go ahead.
This was actually passed at the last council meeting. It was suspended and then passed unanimously, unanimously, I'm sorry, tongue tied, I'm sorry. But there was an amendment made so, and the attorney that created this ordinance said that we couldn't actually pass this on the first reading until after, if, we could have passed it, if the park board would have passed it before the first reading, but since they didn't, they passed it after the first reading, we have to have a second reading on it. So I'm sorry about that. That's, I just want, we just want to do everything legally, so.
We absolutely got to. So that's why we check everything, and we appreciate that diligence. I appreciate Tom, was it Tom Pittman?
It was, absolutely, Tom Pittman.
I appreciate Tom Pittman for sure. Let's start with the, we need to do the reading still, right? So Fafah Penny, would you mind doing that one? Yeah.
Yeah, we read it, but just, you just have to read the title and the ordinance number.
Ordinance 24-32, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Portage approving the issuance of bonds of the City of Portage Park District and related matters. Let the record reflect that it has been read in its entirety.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion, and who's the second? Gina? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that passed. Okay, so now we have the second reading for the ordinance of the 2434, establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area. After this meeting, maybe we all need a DORA. But that said, I will point out that despite some humorous references, you talk about how busy things got. I know that there were things that we still wanted to study. I'm comfortable with what you guys want to do, but I didn't get the chance to take Bob to Griffith yet. Given that we're not going to really be having any events or things going on, if you guys would like to table this one, I'd be supportive of that if you guys need more time, but I'm also open to any questions you have. But I guess we'll do the second reading first. Melissa, would you mind taking that one?
Sure. Ordinance 2434, an ordinance establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area for in the City of Portage, Board of Commons, and let the record reflect its entirety.
So simply put, I mean, if you guys have continued questions, I know there were questions, and Colin, I don't think you were here, Sophia Moore.
I had one or two, and, oh no, did Mike leave? Okay, one of my questions was for Mike. So this is to allow, basically, to allow us to sell alcohol at a festival event at Founder Square. You can then leave the area in which you purchased it and walk around within the designated area.
So that is correct, but there's, there's more. Like, if I were just, if I were trying to trick you, I'd say yes, and, you know, there, there's more that, you know, you deserve to know about, of course.
Well, you could also buy a beverage in one place, remove it to another place.
Within that designated area.
But the bar owner would still have the right to refuse bringing in outside drinks.
That is correct. And so, this serves as a couple purposes. So if you're talking the Founder Square festivals that we have, and we have our beer garden, every DORA has to have a designated bar or a couple designated licensed bars, restaurants that are part of the DORA. So we are not able to use our, what do you call it, our beer garden area as that. So we do have to have other bars within the DORA to make it work. It does allow for people to purchase and then step out and go within that same area, but it also would allow you, assuming that the owners are on board within the designated times and rules within this, it would allow you to go from, say, you're at the Stone Quarry, and you're walking over to the Social Goat. If the owners are on board, you'd be able to bring your drinks, cups, you know, with you. A lot of cities, they make different rules within that. So I know it got referenced last time that ours doesn't include this currently as written, but like there are some cities that say you have to use special cups, you know, if you're moving around. There's, of course, some discussion that we might want to have about, this is written in the broadest sense, so it goes for a certain time period of days, and there's a scope of hours. Some cities get tighter on that, looser on that. Speaking on a executive side, I do think that the district created is very reasonable, in part because the downtown's going to develop, and it's a little bit easier to have an area that's larger and encompasses it, even though in practice, it's going to be quite a while before somebody's going from the square to there. I think the other part to note is, and then this is where I'm glad the chief is back, Indiana law, when it comes to open container, is goofy for people who find out how it actually works. If I were at my house and I just opened a beer and Ferdinand called me up and said, hey, Austin, why don't you come over and hang out, I can pretty much take my beer to Ferdinand's house, not in a car, but I could walk there. But somebody who currently might be going from, let's say, the Legion and walking the same direction I am, going from the Legion to, let's say, on the Rocks, they're breaking the law and I'm not. What a DORA is about is permitting where you can buy alcohol and step out, but now I'll bring up our chief because I.
Yeah, that, that was my question for you, Mike. Like, this would not prohibit someone from bringing alcohol to an event at Founder Square, sitting there, listening to music, and then walking around with it. Currently, you are legally allowed to do that as long as you brought the beverage and you didn't purchase it.
I believe so. So obviously, alcohol laws fall under excise, and they're, they're the experts on all of it, but yeah, I believe that's, that's correct.
Like, you all couldn't stop a person from walking down Central Avenue with a bottle of alcohol if they're not inebriated and they're not causing a public nuisance, correct?
Correct. And actually, the public intoxication laws have changed, too, so there's, there's a whole nother can of worms there, but yeah.
Again, it's the, where Indiana laws come into play is leaving an establishment that's selling it to you, and what a DORA does allows you to leave those establishments. It doesn't change the existing law that allows you to bring your own alcohol somewhere.
Yes, I think where you're going, so, so with the, the excise laws, a lot of, of that is governing how businesses and different entities, you know, how you can serve and where you can go and different things like that, whereas, like you say, a, a private citizen who's walking out of their house, that's a, that's a different story, so. I don't know if that helped or not, but.
It did, thank you.
Okay.
So if the customer is at the Rocks and they buy a drink, and they leave the Rocks to go somewhere else to Social Goat or to Founder Square, then being allowed to do that, doesn't that then reduce the revenue of that business owner because he's now lost the customer who left, rather than if they stayed and remained in the business, they would be more prone to purchase more drinks or more food items? So you removed, you removed the ability for that small business owner to gain more revenue and sales?
Well, you didn't remove the ability because, again, individual, well, I guess the idea, anybody can go to a bar and decide to leave. I mean, so simply put, you know, if someone's in a bar and I decide, hey, I'm going to leave this bar and I'm not going to spend any more money here, it's really no different whether I'm leaving a bar in a DORA or leaving a bar out of one. The only difference is if I leave a bar in a DORA, I have the drink I bought in my hand, whereas if I'm not in a DORA, I have to finish it first or throw it away before I go out. That's why it's important that individual businesses within a DORA have the right to not participate. We can't force you to take a customer in. I think the bigger thing to think about, though, is that if you're in, I love how we always advertise our Portage places as we talk about this. Right now, let's say that you were at Big Time, and let's say, and I don't know if you drink, it's not my bit, but let's say that you had a drink at Big Time. You cannot currently leave Big Time to go to the park with that drink, but I, I can get a drink from essentially my house. I can, you know, take a thing of beer in the backseat of my car, and I can drive and park at the park, and I can get out and drink at the park, and I can wave at you, and I'm perfectly legal, but you can't leave the bar to come and see me unless you put your drink down. That's the law change within a DORA.
And so even with the DORA using special cups, that's an additional cost that a business owner who does choose to participate would have to incur by purchasing these special cups.
But they don't have to.
They don't have to.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If they, if they choose to, that's an additional cost that they will bear in their business if they wanted to participate.
If they want to participate in the DORA, but that said, that's a decision you guys would make, but you got to consider that having a DORA brings people to an area. So if you've got an area with multiple places to drink, such as, you know, bars, restaurants, what have you, it actually brings in customers, and that's been the experience of other towns and cities in Indiana that have created Doras within their walkable districts.
Well, and the, the other side of this is not every event at Founder Square has a beer garden. The city may operate a beer garden. We don't, at every event, we don't have the capacity to do that. So this would allow the opportunity, if you didn't want to bring your own alcohol, or you decided you just wanted to go buy a drink, you could theoretically go do that, because we don't always have a beer garden. But this would also give the ability to where we don't have to fence in a beer garden. You go in, you purchase it, you walk out with it, you walk around the entire DORA area with it, which would probably increase our sales as well at events where a beer garden is present. Because now, I'm inclined to bring my own, because then I can sit out on the lawn and listen to music. I don't have to be in the physical space for it. We don't have to bring fencing for it anymore, because you go in, you purchase it, you leave.
And I think that another piece, and I don't actually think the numbers have shown this, but people have demonstrated some concern about when we've got events going on, the question of is our beer garden competing with other business? I don't think that that's as relevant, at least right now, as maybe some people have said, but I can appreciate the concern. The DORA interlinks that, so you can be, let's say, at Founder Square, and you're like, you know what, I want to go to Big Time and I want to, you know, finish this here. Or you can go from Big Time to the event at Founder's. It makes it that you've got people coming and going when you have something going on, if we're talking about the square side. I think that further by what's currently the Portage Mall, that absolutely increases movement and creates the flexibility of, you know, do I want to go, but do I want to be stuck at one bar if I can hop over here, hop over there? Again, assuming that everybody participates, you know. It might not look like it now, but there will come a day that there's more buildings between the mall and the square, which is why we've created the district where we've created it. And I will note, the district includes the police station. You will not be allowed to bring alcohol into the police station, at least to my knowledge. Oh, darn it, Mike left, so I can't, oh, there he is. I don't think that's true.
So, so as it stands currently, if I'm correct, based on what chief said, hypothetically, I could bring a cooler of my favorite alcoholic beverage and sit in front of the pavilion, listen to the first-class entertainment, and that's fine. If this passes, then you just basically.
You can still do that.
You can go to the beer garden and then take it outside and sit in the thing in front, listen to the first-class entertainment.
If you've got your favorite, because let's say that you like something that's really high-end, classy, that we just don't sell at our beer garden, you know, but you bring your own, and I could buy my beer garden beer, but I could leave the beer garden and sit by you while you drink your fancy, dancy.
Right, that's, that's a really good example of, because I do this, I, I bring my own cooler, I sit there, I drink what I want to drink, but I can't bring it into the beer garden at the moment, and a person that does, is in the beer garden drinking something, can't bring it out. And I, it just doesn't make any sense to me. We, we allow you to bring your own alcohol and drink wherever you want in the city, but oh, if we sell it to you, you got to stay within this fenced-in area.
And this is where we have some time, because we're not going to have, as you can tell, like, I mean, I don't really think that there's a big push to have alcohol at the coming Christmas tree lighting, so I don't think we're in a huge hurry. Maybe next year, maybe next year, but all, yeah. What I'm going to say is that we do have some time if you guys want to make some adjustments. The main adjustment that I know that you brought up, Ferdinand, was concern about glass, which, again, to be fair, it's tough to stop already, but if you want to consider it, you know, there's things like that. I think that it's currently written from 1:30 to, I'm not quite sure how late it goes offhand, but if there's.
Eleven to 11, Sunday to Thursday, 11 to 1 a.m., Friday to Saturday.
And that's where I think if you guys want to have some time to kind of hash that, I totally understand. I'm comfortable with it where it is in general, but I also understand that it's December, and we probably are not too worried about it from an event side until maybe the spring. And I do understand, too, that I did promise Bob that I would take him to Griffith, and we'd get some Coca-Cola, and, you know, we'd kind of see how it operates. I'm not trying to be pushy myself. I appreciate how much everybody's really studied up on this. I just think that we're in a pretty good spot, and I think that we've kind of, I think that we've done a good job over the last month of at least explaining the ins and outs of the current law, so we understand what this actually is and isn't, you know?
As it relates to the Portage Mall aspect of this proposal, I do have concerns, you know, call me old-fashioned, but if I met an establishment, I'd finish a drink before I go to the next establishment. I really see a need to take it with me, per se.
Fancy, dancy, see what I mean?
And, you know, the former deputy prosecuting attorney in me kind of looks at that as potential hazards, potential cautions, and so I do remain skeptical at this point. I'd make a motion to table it at this point for further discussion.
Second.
Well, we have a motion, and I don't know exactly who seconded, but. Ferdinand, are you coming to meet with me and Bob to Griffith sometime?
And actually, so that goes back to my other point, is that I recently drove through Griffith on Broad Street right there, which is where the DORA, and they do have signs posted where they are visible. But downtown Griffith has the existing infrastructure that right now downtown Portage doesn't necessarily have, and that's not saying that it won't, just like you said, they, but that's just a concern.
And just, I want to clarify, the reason these bars are listed is because they're the closest ones to the DORA, and it requires.
That is correct.
That there is, is it at least one establishment, or is it, it has to be?
It's got to be an anchor.
So there's got to be at least one. But as opposed to just saying one, picking one of them, like just list it all of them.
And I should add, too, you have the ability as a city, we have the ability as a city to create, I believe, up to seven Doras. I mean, the law is designed to encompass various areas of different shapes. I mean, if you guys study this and want to create two and then merge them later, again, I'm not trying to throw too many ideas out. There's some flexibility there, but I do think we want to have something that encompasses both the mall and the square, whether that's together, separate, what have you.
Well.
There's an efficiency standpoint to it.
Part of this is, I mean, there, there is a development plan for, for downtown. Our goal is that there are many, many more establishments in the next five, 10 years. We're not there yet, but, I mean, that's the ultimate goal.
And I apologize, but we do have a motion and a second to table. I think if we can do an all-in-favor style vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's tabled. No, I think that we're on the right track there, and all lightheartedness aside, it's kind of nice that we had this discussion given where. All right, so now we get to, oh, I was excited about this one, the, no, the 2436, 2025 tax anticipation warrant. Gina, would you mind reading that one, and then we'll get into what it is?
Indiana Bonds Bank 2025 Advanced Funding Program, Ordinance 2436, an ordinance authorizing the City of Portage, Indiana to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the general fund and park fund of the insurer in anticipation of and not in excess of current taxes levied in the year 2024 and collectible in the year of 2025. Authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to, to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds in the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon. And. And...
Just saying that it's been, yeah.
This has been read in its entirety.
Liz, did you want to go over a bit more of what this is?
What this is, is every year we take out a tax anticipation warrant to make, to make it to our tax draw in June. This, the Indiana Bond Bank is the one that's doing the, giving us our loan, and this is what they anticipate we are going to need. It's going to be seven-point million, or seven-point-one million dollars, basically, to make it to our tax draw in June.
What was it in 2024, 2024?
It was five, five million. It went up two million for different, various reasons.
And I think if I remember right, at the beginning of the year, when you and Buzz found the 1.8, I don't know if that's the right way to say it, that contributed to this being lower than what it could have been, is that correct?
Absolutely. And that's why we're doing a, right after this, we'll be doing the additional appropriations.
To cover that part.
Correct.
This is not something that we want to be trapped in a cycle. Portage has been in a cycle of having to do this for a long time. I know that it's a process to get out, but it is a challenging one and we want to get there, but at the same time, we have to be able to actually pay the bills and at the moment, that's how we do it.
This requires a suspension, right?
No, this is a second reading.
Oh, this is a second reading. Motion to adopt.
Who won the jinx, Gina? We have a motion and a second. I think it was Victoria. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We then go into Ordinance 2438, Additional Appropriations for E O Y. Councilman Parnell, would you mind reading that one for us?
Additional appropriation ordinance 24-38, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, Section 1 be it ordained, resolved by the Common Council of the City of Portage, Porter County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Let the record reflect that the ordinance has been read in its entirety.
Liz, did you want to say any more from there? So this one is a first reading.
This is a first reading.
So to pass now, that would need the suspension. Liz, do you want to explain a little bit about what this is or...
I can explain it. It's, it's been in your Dropbox for about a week now, so if anybody has any questions, it's basically, we're re-appropriating money, we do it every year at the end, usually in December. We're doing it a little early this year. This is what we anticipate, that we need to make it to the end of this year so we can have a zero balance, carry over zero balance for 2025. It's 2.7 in additional appropriations, as you can see by the spreadsheet here that you guys all have in your Dropbox, that where the money's going into, the money's coming, where the money came from was we had 1.8 million dollars in additional tax levy that was caught in January of this year, and that's where the majority of the money is coming for, for this additional appropriation. Also, we have, we had $697,000 in ARPA money that was left that we have had to either budget or else spend this year, so we're putting that towards salaries for the police and the fire for January. And then there was additional $203,000, or $2300,000 in miscellaneous revenue that was collected this year that we didn't anticipate. So that's where we got the money to do this additional appropriation, to shore up so we can carry a zero balance into next year.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt and a second. All in favor...
I have, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I have a few questions.
No problem.
Um, Liz or, or the mayor, whoever, there's 108,000 in additional appropriations for the Law Department. Did we just not budget enough? Did we spend more?
I, I believe we, there was just not enough budgeted. It's the new, a new mayor, a new clerk treasurer, you anticipate a lot more for a new mayor, new clerk treasurer. We usually at, you know, need more advice. I can let the mayor talk about that, but...
Simply put, and I'm not trying to, I could, we can do a new mayor study along with the wage study if you want, if you want to weigh it, but generally speaking, there's a lot that goes into making sure that things work. We explored a lot of angles to make things go, and so I think that simply put, the amount of money that ended up in legal, not that we got in legal trouble, but legal advice study ended up going over.
Not to, not to mention, like, we asked for legal advice for the additional, or the tax levy when we did it in January. There was a lot of different avenues that we did ask for legal advice in that we probably won't need the advice next year. We have two bonds, a park bond also we had asked for legal advice on, and the sanitary sewer bond.
I believe what you're saying, Liz, is it didn't all go to Ed? Although some did.
No, I did not assume that. Um, okay, thank you. So then what exactly is the, where did it go? 124,000 in capital outlays for the opioid restricted fund.
Some of that money's going to fire for some of their medical equipment that they are buying. Some of it's going to, went to the contract that Portage Recovery Association has with us. And personal services is, again, was going to be used for personal services.
One more. The 200,000 in the mayor's office, is that because we didn't budget benefits?
There was the benefits on my end, and then you also had that, and Liz, you can correct me, but I believe this is the case, it's been adjusted for the incoming '25 budget, but the addition of HR counted as mayor's office expenses. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And that includes benefits, wage, and even just things that were bought for the purposes of that office. That's been adjusted, or what's the right term? It's been anticipated for the 2025 budget, but in creating an HR department, we ran everything through the mayor's office as a department this time around.
Absolutely.
And the opioid restriction, that's coming from the opioid settlements and we can anticipate that in the future as well?
Yes, but it's going to be going down drastically. We got a big chunk in the beginning, unless there's some more money that the federal government obtains from lawsuits, then it will be, will be going down drastically and that's earmarked also for, the future money is earmarked for Portage Recovery and then also for the consultant for the police department.
Thank you.
The social worker, right?
I'm sorry, the social worker.
Thank you. Okay, one, one more. In local income tax, there's 307,000 for personal services. Is that just general payroll or is that funding something specifically?
That's general payroll.
Oh, one more. Oh, geez, sorry. The 1,700 for city council.
You stole my question, Colin.
Sorry.
That was for the boot camp that was done in January to pay for the boot camp. That was not budgeted for this year.
That's something to, I think, just remember for 2028. So in 2027, we're making...
Well, I think we, we budgeted for at least, there was a guarantee that there were at least two new members. So we should have budgeted something.
We budgeted, well, this was up and above.
Yeah, because we knew that there were at least two new members joining. That's it, sorry.
Great questions. So we do have, I think, so we have the motion and the second. So now, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. And then we get to the introduction of the resolutions. Resolutions 2405, City of Portage Form of A R P A Plan. Victoria, would you mind reading it? Resolution 2405.
Resolution number 24-05, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Portage, Indiana, adopting an American Rescue Plan Act Plan and appropriating monies from the City of Portage, our coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. Let the record reflect, the resolution has been read in its entirety.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that passed. Phew, is there anything that I missed that we were supposed to vote on today?
I believe there's the NIPSCO resolution.
Yes, so let's go ahead and we can definitely bring that up. So what was sent to you guys was the information sent to us by NIPSCO. Did everybody have a chance to read that and what are their thoughts?
I'd like to amend it. But I'm looking at everybody else to see if we're all on board with this. Okay, it looks like we are. I'm going to move to amend the last paragraph to reflect that the public hearing, I don't have the date, is it Thursday? At 6:00 PM, at 5:00 PM, at Miller Beach. We'll get those details, but this was the November one. There's another one that's happening this week. So since this didn't pass at the November meeting, I think we should amend it to reflect that there is another meeting that people can attend this week. So that's my motion.
So you're motioning to amend first. So do we have a second?
I'm going to recuse myself from any votes related to this.
Probably the best possible situation, given your job.
And this is just the amendment for the date, correct?
Correct.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear any opposed, but just in case, any opposed? I think it floats. All right, so now we have an amended... Oh, I'm sorry, Penny?
Aye, abstain.
Thank you, Penny. And so now it's amended, if you will.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
So we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Thank you. And then I do believe that passes with one abstention.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor, in regards to Ordinance 2439, the amending the 2024 salary ordinance, and as Colin pointed out, that the clerk treasurer has the authority to hire whomever she wants to hire, then why did we vote on that this evening? I'm a little confused.
Ed, would you mind explaining that one more time?
It was an ordinance that was presented in the Dropbox and the clerk treasurer believed it to be necessary to have the fiscal body consider it.
Well, I'll, I'll add on, like, every person that is paid by the city has to have a matching salary in the annual salary ordinance. So in order, Liz, as clerk treasurer, can hire whoever she wants within her budget, but there still has to be an adjustment to the salary ordinance. So if the State Board of Accounts came in and said, we need to see the salary ordinance that this person should have been paid what they were paid, there has to be a matching amount that the fiscal body has approved that salary. It didn't pass because there were, there weren't five votes. There could be a special meeting to adopt it, or I think it could just wait till January. I mean, you can amend the ordinance whenever, it doesn't have to happen in the year.
Essentially, there's a point where someone is going to ask, who is this person and what are they going to get paid? And then there should be an ordinance documenting that that job exists and what they get paid. And I would say in general, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, but you can correct me if I say something off, it's usually a good idea to have the position created in the ordinance first so that you know that part's taken care of. Because if I or Liz hires somebody and you guys never put it in, I do eventually run into a problem.
But, to be clear, the 2024 ordinance included a position of receptionist, theoretically. That person's not going to be paid $45,000 in two weeks. They're going to be paid, what is it, $2,000? That, like, 2384? Liz could hire her tomorrow as the receptionist and then the new ordinance takes effect in January and that person moves into the position. So, I mean, it exists, but for good record-keeping, we should amend it to reflect what that person's position actually is.
Well, thank you very much. I was just confused because I know we spent a lot of time on that this evening and then it actually wasn't necessary.
So it is necessary eventually, and I think that in general, when you're accounting for taxpayer dollars, the most responsible thing is to try to get it as soon as possible. But given that you guys in the second thing got voted on, created the position in 2025, if Liz hires the person with the existing job, existing pay, they can then, she can choose to transition that person into the new job that's now been created.
Thank you very much.
I think both of those comments are accurate in terms of the reference to the State Board of Accounts. The statute in Indiana simply provides, a unit may fix the level of compensation of its officers and employees.
And I think it's from that statute that the salary ordinance has come from. So I've suggested that it come back to the council at the next opportunity when the salary ordinance is presented.
And historically, Liz will remember this nightmare of a time, we used to do ranges to where like a position had a minimum, a medium, and a maximum, and the ranges were like out of control, like 30,000, $40,000 ranges. And what you ran into was the mayor's office would selectively choose to pay some people at the maximum, some people at the minimum, with no rhyme or reason. So, I don't know, it was probably 2016, we started, 2017, we started pushing back on that and said, no, no, we're going to have exact salaries listed for every position. Because then you know exactly how much a person's being paid and there is no ambiguity at all about what their salary is. So there is another way to do it. And then that gives the flexibility to hire a person at a higher rate or a lower rate, but it opens up to favoritism, in my opinion.
And just to be, you know, clear, not, not super firm, but clear, I very much prefer the current policy of something set in the ordinance. I think that, it's not that I have any problem with cities that have shown that they can do ranges responsibly, but especially when you're getting into things like department heads, administrative, and it's just, it can really be a nightmare to have a mayor with that much flexibility. And I say that as a mayor, it's really important to never give me too much power. Or anybody too much power. Because you might like me, but the next guy or gal could be a, you know, mistake to give that much authority to. I think the current system works very well. All right, reports from the chief. Chief Candiano, would you mind coming back? How are you doing?
Yeah, I'm sorry that we're still here this late. I will try to be brief, but I think there are a couple of important things I wanted to talk about for, for the community that may be watching and for all you here, so first off, just real quick, our incidents for November, 2,443, actually pretty far down on total incidents in November. Unfortunately, a lot of these have been some, some rather serious incidents, but we are down to currently 81 a day. At the end of November, we were sitting at 32,025 for the year, so I would like to congratulate four of our academy graduates that graduated a few weeks ago from the Northwest Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, Logan Johnson, Trevor Lenhart, Andrew Achedson, and Logan Rhodes. So we're excited to have them back from the academy. A couple of them are already released and a couple of them are into their field training program. We currently have five positions open. We recently lost a veteran officer, he's leaving us for the Border Patrol. Wish him luck, definitely a different kind of experience that he's going to be undertaking, so we wish him luck and thank him for the, the time that he spent here. So we do have five openings, we're working on getting those filled. Unfortunately, I did want to talk a little bit about the murder-suicide that we had on Friday night. You know, I know these are, these are tough things to talk about, they're tough to process, but unfortunately, these are the things that are... unfortunately, these are the things that our officers and our firefighters are dealing with out there. I think it's important for the community to understand that, and I think it's important for you all to understand that as you control funding and make decisions that, you know, influence some of the stuff that we do, so. Last Friday night, our officers responded to what came out as a verbal disturbance. We've got a lot of verbal disturbances, that could be Austin and Colin up here arguing. Might call the police for a verbal disturbance between Austin and Colin.
Is that how you took us going back and forth? I thought we were on the same team for most of this.
Happened in one meeting before.
Just trying to lighten the mood a little bit, but you know, just showing that that's what they thought they were, that's what they thought they were walking into. Our first officers get out of the car and as they're approaching the house, they hear six shots fired from within several feet of them. Obviously, they do what they need to do to regroup, take cover, make sure that they're not the ones being shot at. A short time later, a seventh gunshot goes off, and not too long after that, our officers forced entry into the house, unfortunately, located two deceased individuals, a male and a female, and a very, very seriously injured female who was a daughter. At that time, Portage firefighters came in and obviously assisted. The officers initially began life-saving measures and the fire department came in and did what they did. The only good thing about this is that through the effort of our officers and, you know, I don't know what they did in that ambulance or what they did on that helicopter, but they did what they needed to do, and to the hospital that she went to, they did what they needed to do, and the prognosis is pretty good there. I can't give a lot of things, but it's definitely a lot better than it was that night. You know, I need to thank a couple people for what they did that night, obviously our patrol crew that was there, not the normal thing you think you're gonna experience on a night. We also had the Ogden Dunes Police Department, the Porter Police Department, the Burns Harbor Police Department, the Porter County Sheriff's Department, that showed up. You know, it's what we do. They heard the call, they came, they went in the house with us. Again, I gotta thank the Portage Fire Department for what they did when they came in and took over. And then, last but certainly not least, our dispatchers. I listened to that call, something that will probably never go out of my head, although they weren't on scene, they heard what was going on. And I want to make sure that we thank them. You know, domestic violence is a terrible situation, lots of people are unfortunately dealing with that. For anybody who's listening, I hope that you understand that there's people out here that want to help, there's things that, there's services out there, call us, call somebody, let us intervene, let us help out if we can. And then lastly, on this note, just, you know, I wanted to offer our thoughts and prayers. They're with the family, they're with the daughter who's recovering, and then I'm sure you all know, one of the deceased was a member of the Portage Township Schools family, so our thoughts and prayers are with them, they're obviously suffering too. The second thing I wanted to talk about, I sent you guys all a video, I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at that. Again, just another kind of glimpse into what we're doing, we're dealing with on a daily basis. Last night, we had a shooting that occurred approximately 100 yards away from our police department. It was a marijuana deal, went south, one of the individuals fired 16 rounds at two other individuals who were attempting to buy the narcotics. Two individuals were shot, but they sustained non-life-threatening injuries. There was a total of 18 rounds that were shot outside of an apartment complex last night. None of these individuals reside in the City of Portage, they all fled, but by the work of our patrol crew, our detective bureau, I got a couple officers that are in here with me tonight, I know at least one of them has been probably up since midnight last night. Through the joint efforts and with other departments, they were able to find everybody involved. Happy to report, we have two in custody currently, one on an attempted murder charge, one on a criminal recklessness charge, and we've got a third charge on somebody for neglect of a dependent because they brought their, I believe, five-year-old child to the drug deal gunfight. Yeah, it's, I don't know, I'm running out of words, you know. I'm disgusted by what we're seeing around us, I'm disgusted that individuals continue to come into our city and commit crimes. The majority of our major crimes continue to be committed by non-residents against non-residents. It's, I've seen the mayor post it, that's the truth. We've got major highways that run through the city and it's easy to get in, it's easy to get out. I'm upset that we have these crimes, I'm also happy that we continue to solve them and we continue to lock people up. Between our patrol crew, our detective bureau, they've done a heck of a job this year. A lot of people have gone to jail for doing stupid things. You know, we work in a profession where we can be criticized for being too proactive and not proactive enough at the same time, you know. I try to not get into too much social media, but there's people, they'll argue with each other about the same incident, and we didn't do enough or we did too much. I mean, what do you do? Complain that we make too many arrests, we stop too many cars, we're road pirates, stealing people's money. In the same thread, people are accusing us of being lazy and not doing enough and sitting in a parking lot. I'm not sure how I can steal your money and pull you over but sit in a parking lot too much, but that's kind of what our people are dealing with out there. This being the last meeting of the year, that's kind of why I wanted to bring some of this up. I'm just really proud of our officers, I believe they're out there fighting the good fight. The last few months have taken a toll on probably all of us, all of them, but they continue to go out there each and every day. I just wanted you all to understand the things that they're encountering, I hope you watch that video, just to kind of see what, you know, what they can walk into on a daily basis. This is why we ask for the funding we ask for, this is why we ask for tools like Flock, the cameras and things. This crime last night, that was one of the main reasons that that got solved, is because we were able to trace that through the camera system, and one of these individuals was actually arrested in Maryville with the help of the Maryville Police Department. This is why we ask for funding on these types of things, so that we can put these people in jail. The other databases and things, and the way that we communicate with others that we ask for funding for, the amount of overtime that we're spending on major cases, we are spending money, we are going over our overtime budget a little bit, but we're putting criminals in jail. We want those who live in the city to feel safe, and fortunately, I believe the large majority of our citizens, probably, you know, 97, 98% of them will never even be exposed to any of these crimes. They may never even see it, they probably wouldn't know about it unless there was social media. Social media plays into a big part of it where every little thing that happens is announced. I mean, we have people that listen to the scanner and put out every single call we get to. So fortunate for, you know, fortunately, the majority of our citizens will never have to deal with this. So we want those who live here to feel safe. I also want those who come here to commit crimes, I want them to feel very unwelcome. I want them to expect that they're going to get caught and they're gonna get prosecuted like the criminals they are. And, so we're gonna keep doing what we do, whether people want to see us out there stopping cars, doing those things, we're gonna do what we think is right for the city. And again, I know it's kind of long and it's kind of a soapbox rant here, but, you know, end of the year, I don't get to talk to my guys every day, you know, but I think that this is a very public setting where I can say they're doing a good job and I want to thank them, so. Any questions?
Chief, I don't know if I've told this story, I've told it a lot of times, because it's one of my favorite, just Portage police stories, small ones. I might have said it at a council meeting before, but I'm gonna leave out the expletive. It's one of my stories where someone committed a pretty serious crime in our city, and then he got arrested in Lake County by our SWAT team. And what I remember being told is how this individual said, "Why are the Portage police arresting me? I'm in Lake County." And the person said to him, "Because you did the crime in Portage." And he said, "Oh," and then there was an expletive that I probably shouldn't say as a mayor up here. But when I tell the story, I've said the word. If you commit a crime in Portage, what is extraordinary that we all count on is that they're gonna get caught, and that our police stop at nothing to catch the people that commit the crimes here. As you state, almost 70% of the arrests in Portage are not Portage people. We are off a highway with 44 million people driving through, we are in easy proximity to a lot of areas around us. All said and done, the work that you guys put in to keep us safe, it's worth every penny and it's worth every ounce of support. So if there is more you need from us, and I know you're not shy about it, but never be afraid to bring it up, we'll fight for you because you fight for us. The Portage, people don't like to say it, but we are the third biggest city in Northwest Indiana, and we are the only one of the top three with a population that has been growing for the last 20 years. When somebody says, "Oh, there's crime in Portage," yeah, there's people in Portage. At the end of the day, there's people, and where there's people, there's gonna be issues, and we have a police department that takes care of us. What's happened recently is shocking, and there are some things you can never just predict, but the things that can be anticipated, you guys do an outstanding job, and for the unanticipated, you get there faster than anybody. One other story I'll tell, and I don't remember if I've told this in a public setting before, but I'm prepared to. I, early on as mayor, got a really like weird, angry email from an individual who I've heard of before, stating that the biggest problem in Portage, from this person's perspective, is, "Oh, our police actually tell the media about the arrests that we do, and that we should stop doing that like other cities that make you wait a week before you get it and it's old news." Never. We appreciate the transparency and that people know, the biggest deterrent we have to crime in Portage is knowing that if you come to Portage and commit a crime, you are gonna get caught, you're gonna become known. And I think that the more people realize how hard our police work and how successful you guys are, that ultimately is what makes us a safe, and I'm sorry if this bothers some people, but safe, bigger city, we just are, and we've got a great police department that handles a city of our size, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
We have petitions, remonstrances, and public input. If you'd like to come up, now's the time, I'll give you about two minutes, I try not to be too heavy on that, but anyone's welcome. Oh, yes, sir. You could come up to the podium, you can either that one or that microphone, whatever you prefer.
I have three points. One of them I've just before here, what's going on with the house on Stone and County Line? I was told October was the D-date, that something's gonna happen. I've seen nothing.
There is stuff that's happened, there was some activity that happened with the house, we are still waiting on it, but as I said in some recent information we put out, we have a speed limit that we've got to work on. I'm trying to think if somebody, is LeAnn still here? If you talked to LeAnn, who I know you know behind you.
I know LeAnn knows about it, I've already talked to her, I've called her.
Yeah, LeAnn can give the more details on that, but it is something that we are actively working on, and I hate saying that because everyone says we're working on it, but unlike the police, and I think that Gilz Spiezzak said it very well, when he talked about one of the best benefits of being a, in his case, you know, reserve, is he's taking a problem out of people's lives. If somebody's going around punching, stabbing people, police take them, they put them in a car, they drive them away. What happens on the prosecution side and all that process, that comes later. For the people being impacted, it goes away. The harder part for problematic houses is that it's only that prosecution side, or if you will, there's no immediate fix. But there are progress that we're making. Are your other two questions about a problematic house? Because I could give you a positive example.
One is, I've talked to LeAnn about it, I'm on my second month trying to get a lousy street light fixed on my street. I live on the western side of Portage, across from Fagley, we're on a dead-end street. It's the only light on the street I know about.
And it's a city light?
It lights up the whole street. We can't get NIPSCO to do anything. Two and a half, oh, not two months, am I right, LeAnn?
Yes. There's been an open contact now for, excuse me, about six weeks. I've talked to NIPSCO, they assured me that it's going to get repaired. It hasn't.
If anybody can help?
What is your address?
3059 Randolph Street. I live on, you're my representative, I think. And, you know, it's a dead-end, no outlet street. There might be a light around the corner on the short street that goes into a field, but other than that, we have one street light between my next-door neighbor and me.
Ed, is there any way that we can fix it and send NIPSCO a bill, or does that create a can of worms?
Well, you know what they told me? The reason I contacted LeAnn, they told me Portage wasn't paying their bill. That's what they, that's the story I got the first time.
Yeah, that ain't the case.
And I told her right out, that was a bunch below me.
I'd be really shocked to find out we were only not paying the bill on one light.
Yeah. But it lights up my whole street where I live and down the street quite a ways.
No, and, yeah.
It's 12 kids live on that street, they do play out a little after dark.
And I want to state to your first question, I gotta be careful because sometimes there's information that we know that we can't just say, but, yeah. What's your third?
Third was about one of our businesses, this is a positive note, one of our businesses works like the, not Stalvazian, Goodwill, almost identical, except they don't cut furniture. It's called the Portage Resale Shop. My wife works there, and that's one thing I'm bringing it up. She's a volunteer there. They have one paid employee, the guy that runs it, they've got 30 volunteers. You take your stuff to Goodwill, and they got several employees that are all over it that make a lot of money. These places not make money, they give it to people. They actually give to people that need help money, and clothes, and whatever they need. Recently, the fire department had, maybe they've done it several times, I don't know if that's true, my wife heard part of the conversation. Apparently, a family, we're only guessing, had a problem with a fire and they needed some help, they needed some clothes, they needed something, and they helped, they give it to them. Come down, take whatever you need. That's how they operate. They're standalone, everybody don't know where it's at, it's where the old, it's in the old YMCA off of, I can't name the street.
It's an absolutely wonderful spot, yep, on Evergreen. Not Evergreen on the west side, but Evergreen on the east side.
But they do a tremendous, a lot of work, and really help a lot of people. So if I encourage anybody you know, your neighbors, take your donations there, don't take them to the, Goodwill.
Thank you so much. If you check in with LeAnn, she can give you an update on all that, but again, we are pressing with NIPSCO with your light, because, yeah.
For what it's worth, on their website, it says, "We are aware of the problem." On that street light. Doesn't mean anything, but they're aware of it.
LeAnn, did you want to say something else?
Penny, I forwarded you all the contact information, the poll number and...
Was Penny my, was Penny my?
Penny works for NIPSCO.
Oh, you work for NIPSCO?
That's why she recused herself from the NIPSCO vote we just did.
You can go lower on the desk.
Hopefully, NIPSCO doesn't send back.
I'm not a fan of NIPSCO right now.
Hopefully, they don't send back, "We were gonna fix that light, but then you guys went in."
Pardon?
I don't think many people are right now.
Penny does not make the right decision.
They got a lot of work to do, I understand that, but this, I've been trying to contact everybody. My neighbor, Ron Benson, we lived next to, we lived together for 20 years, I couldn't ask for a better neighbor, and we've both been calling.
If we were allowed to fix it and send NIPSCO the bill, I would, but I've been advised legally, we can't do that, so.
I just ask for anybody's help. We need that, we need, we need the street light.
And you came up in our recent talk with NIPSCO, so again, there's, as Colin has said, there's something that says that they're aware, but we want to see it done, okay?
I don't, I don't think that's Penny's district, sorry.
If anybody needs more information.
No, I think she can put in a good word.
It's Gina's district.
No, no, but Penny can put in a good word with...
LeAnn, do you have the poll number and all that?
I do, I sent all that.
She's got all that, okay.
She has it now, I forwarded it.
That's all I got, I'm sorry to take up much of your time.
No, you're good. Chief Candiano, do you mind, I'm just redistricting for you, I don't, no. Chief Candiano, on code enforcement, is, could I say anything about yesterday?
Oh, absolutely.
So, I wanted to just talk about a code enforcement, unsafe building success story, because as I've said in some recent posts, sometimes this takes a lot of work and there's a lot of details. If I say a house on Old Porter, I think a number of people know what house I'm talking about. We've encountered various issues over the years, neighbors who live off of Old Porter Road have been well aware of some issues we've had. One of the challenges we ran into when we came in and wanted to address it is that we had to figure out who the owner was, and it turns out the owner was HUD. But then we had to get HUD to agree that they owned it, because we had record that HUD owned it, and I'm oversimplifying the story, but understand that this took 10 months. Once we got HUD to be aware that they owned it, they had to confirm that, yes, we don't want people living in there, going into that house, you know, what have you, and it finally happened that Monday, we got the official go-ahead, I think, LeAnn, you handled that all, because I was in a meeting and I was so excited to get out, check my phone, they said, "Go ahead," and we now have that, maybe Chief, do you want to come back real quick and just describe what your team did? Because I just gotta say, that was impressive work.
Yeah, putting me on the spot again up here.
I just, I'm sorry.
I think everybody's heard enough from me today.
Oh, no, I just, this is something I'm so proud of, because this is 10 months' worth of work, and it's work that often people don't get to see the success of it.
Yeah, this one was a tough situation because, you know, we were dealing from the law enforcement side with some criminal acts that were occurring there, and then with the whole code enforcement side, the condition of the property and things, and really felt for the neighbors, the people in that, you know, community that were having to deal with this. As the mayor said, the big problem was determining who owned the house and who was allowed to be there and who wasn't, because as you know, you can commit a crime and you get, you know, usually they don't keep you, so it can be a recurring... So it can be a recurring issue at a home and that's kind of what we were running into and multiple people in and out of the house. So we were dealing with the problem in the moment, but we were never able to find a, one more permanent solution. So with the help from everybody, several people from City Hall got us in touch with the right people, got us the documents we needed, and we were able to go over there yesterday and remove, it was only one occupant at the time. There's been many others at different times. We were able to remove them and officially declare that nobody should be living in that home at this point and that nobody should be in it without HUD's approval. So yeah, it was a long saga, you know, it was tough to tell people in the neighborhood that we were working on it and when they're not necessarily seeing the progress, but I think maybe they have faith in the system now, although it wasn't as fast as they wanted it to be. I think we're in a good place now and we've got some definitive law on our side that we can continue to keep that from happening over there. So yeah, a good team ever is definitely a success story on one of these nuisance properties. And as the mayor said, a lot of these do take time where we can handle the problem in a minute, but that's a Band-Aid. And to get the permanent fix, you got to go the extra mile and jump through some other hoops and we were able to do that. So hopefully with some of these other properties in the city that are in similar shape or, you know, some type of a similar circumstance, we can also get to that point with those, so.
The police have been on it throughout. You guys have been patrolling and handling things as it came. There are some big heroes within the City Hall end as far as working on the, getting HUD involved and getting them. LeAnn Van Kuren, my chief of staff, I mean, this was something that I just thank you for, for the diligence you put on it. Tom Cherry, you know, who's here as well. And the name that also has to be said, because if he's watching this meeting or ever does, he absolutely deserves a huge amount of credit too, is Congressman Frank Mervan. Because when we ran into HUD, not completely being as committed as maybe they should have been to get somebody out of a property they own, sometimes you got to call your congressman's office and then they suddenly listen. And I've got the letters and the notes to show that Frank was instrumental in getting this problem taken care of. So when people sometimes look at the federal government and say, "What do they do here, us on the ground?" Well, that's a whole big thing, but in this matter, I absolutely have to include Frank on the team that got this done. The media, it was like an hour later, after we talked to Frank, we got, heard back from HUD that suddenly they were moving on it, which is, some things were said, I'm sure. Thank you so much, Chief.
No problem, no problem.
I feel then my faith a little bit, I'm so passionate about the light because two of my great-grandchildren live with me 24/7. They're taking advantage of that light, even though it's almost in my yard. It's supportive to us and everybody on this street.
Absolutely. And I just want to assure you that positive things are happening and we will continue working on that. Any other comments from the council?
Yes, and I apologize for keeping people any longer, but I do have some constituent concerns that were brought to my attention recently. I recently spoke with some constituents, Portage residents who live on Carnation Avenue in the Flowerland neighborhood of the 2nd District. And they're concerned about traffic, particularly speed, going down Carnation Avenue. As I stood there, I noticed, you know, a number of vehicles going faster than the speed limit. They propose, of course, either a speed bump or they propose that we can use their front yard, or at least the easement strip in front of their house, for one of those electronic signs that monitors speed. So I was just inquiring when the next traffic commission meeting is so that I can bring that to their attention.
That would be this Thursday morning at 9:00 AM.
I was about to ask and you already were on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Parnell. My second concern is perhaps a concern for code enforcement, and I don't even know if it can be answered at tonight's meeting, but what is the city policy on a homeowner's bushes? If bushes are grown but the lawn is kept maintenance and does not have an issue, does the city have any type of recourse to address that? And then what is the limit or what is the?
I believe the answer is yes.